To consider purchase, exchange, lease or value of real property as an open meeting may have a detrimental effect on the negotiating position. Is there a motion?
Shall we move on?
Second, uh, all in favor of the motion? Lindsay.
Yes.
Lindsay.
Yes.
Myself, yes. Okay.
Fantastic.
We had an executive session that ran over just a little bit, so again my apologies. So we have the start off on the first agenda item, and by the way there are extra agendas up here if people want to, people want a copy of it. First item would be the high school student advisors, Adam and Bhattacharya.
Hi everyone. Okay, so I'm going to talk a little bit and then Evan's going to go again like we usually do. So this week at school and then... So this week at school and the next short week, the next three days after our spirit week, the pride committee tried to make it so that we have different days than the previous years, so people can get creative, but we still kept some of the classics that everyone loves doing. So today was pajama day, tomorrow is jungle day. Then we have jungle, sorry, jersey day, we have throwback Thursday, aloha Friday, America Monday, and dynamic duo day, and then we have our color wars, which is the same day as a pepper alley where every grade wears their assigned colors, and we have a lot of fun. All fall sports have just ended within the past few weeks. Soccer had great postseason wins, and there was a lot of support from our student body that went to every game. And so also quarter one just ended, and everyone's been saying that it flew by, and we're all excited for the next three quarters. And we just got our grades today, this morning in advisory. And our NHS induction happened about a month ago in mid-October. We had the most students eligible, the most applicants and accepted in the previous years. And for the service part, we decided to change it up a little bit. Instead of having different field trips, we decided to work on three projects as well. And the first one is for the leukemia and lymphoma society, and it's just fundraising. The second is community service at the local assisted living homes in Watertown. And the third is promoting dreams to dresses, which is a program to help girls in need of prom dresses, get them through donated dresses and accessories as well. And we just started these projects, and there's a lot of interest so far, and we're really excited about them. And now I'm just going to let Evan speak about a few more topics. Thank you.
All right. Hi, I'm Evan. I'm going to talk about a few things today. I'm going to start off with the school play, then I'm going to talk about class elections, MCAS retakes, and then club photos. So to begin the play, it was, I spoke about it last time, it's Peter and the Starcatcher. It just happened this past weekend. They've prepared since September. They've worked very hard on it, and it's nice to now have it all done. There are four showtimes, Friday, and the whole, and the whole middle school came to watch that, that one. Yeah, Friday night, and then two shows on Saturday. And then the best one was on, was on Saturday night, it was the most attended showtime. And then at the end, there was a nice little small tribute given to seniors for their last fall play. And then class elections happened recently, so all class officers have been elected, and so they meet student council, all that. MCAS retakes happened last week, and then club photos were taken to go into the yearbook. That's about it. Thank you.
So any questions or comments from the, my apologies, Evan, not Adam, sorry. Anything, any others? All right, well, thank you very much. Thanks for coming.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Next up is public forum. So this is an opportunity, if anyone wants to speak on a general issue before the schools. There's also an opportunity at the end of the meeting for public forum. Does anyone wish to speak in public forum? Okay, next would be student recognition. We have three, three students for the national merit commended students, and I'm going to turn it over to Dr. Galston.
Excellent. It's with great pride and pleasure to be able to share with the community that this year we have three commended students as part of the 2020 National Merit Scholarship Program. So commended students are being recognized for the exceptional academic promise demonstrated by their outstanding performance on the qualifying test used for program entry. So just to, just to ground this in some pretty serious reality, we had over 1.5 million students taking the PSATs in the last, not this fall, but the last fall. And the National Merit Scholarship Committee identified 50,000 students as being in this exceptional group. And of those 50,000, 16,000 moved on to become semifinalists or actual finalists, and the remaining 34,000 are the commended students. So again, to put this in reality, that means that these students being commended this evening are in the top 3.3% of all students taking the PSATs. So that is an accomplishment that fills us with great pride as a community, and it says a lot about these exceptional students in terms of the hard work that they put in to receive that amazing commendation. So I'll ask Chairman Ports to present the, are they certificates? Fabulous. The framed certificates to the three students. So we have Evan Fleischer. And Ashley Nigren. Unfortunately, this evening Raymond Whitney is not here. Maybe he's still recovering from his amazing performance in Peter and the Starcatcher, so, but he was our third commended student.
Thank you very much. Next item is the teaching and learning showcase, and this is the, on the agenda, social emotional learning in the Watertown Public Schools, Kingian nonviolence, and the work they're doing with the high school advisory. So Dr. Galston.
Excellent, thank you. So this worked out very nicely that we have this as our teaching and learning showcase for the school committee tonight. I'm just going to frame this, and we've, we've had our presenters here in the past talking about Kingian nonviolence in general. It's been a while, so I think it's good to bring that back to the forefront in terms of what we're doing within our schools. But the exciting thing also is we have our high school representatives here from our SEL team as well, because we're moving this into the ninth grade curriculum, which is something that's done was fully students initiated and student driven. And it's just very exciting, and so we're really happy this evening to have so many people here to share the work that's being done with the Kingian Nonviolence Program, and to give you a snapshot of how that, that is incorporated into our larger SEL programming as a district. So, but the reason I say that I'm, it's serendipitous that the people are here this evening is because I mentioned earlier in the fall that I had received a letter that we had gained some attention at the state level about the work that's being done with our SEL and equity. And as it turns out, they had heard about the Kingian Nonviolence Program, so they invited a group of people to attend a statewide dissemination fair. So we had students who are here this evening were a part of that presentation. Staff in terms of Ruth and Holly and Swathy were there, and, and also Officer Grady from the police department. And we were highlighted as, at the state for the work that we're doing with the Kingian Nonviolence. So that's, that's something that, again, is a very proud moment for the district. And I would say that since then, we have gotten compliments that our presentation was by far one of the best that they had seen in years. And it is something that they want to be sure that if we can, to be able to share with even more people at the state level. So we're just so proud of the work, this grassroots movement that really came from individuals and students, and, and to see it flourishing is pretty impressive. So I've taken enough time, I'm going to hand it over to our presenters to give you more information about what we're doing.
Kingian Nonviolence and Restorative Justice Circles in WPS. A holistic approach to equity and social emotional learning that applies Dr. King's psychology and mythology to conflict in our schools and communities.
Thank you. And Kingian Nonviolence has been field tested in many schools and had some amazing results, but one of the things that's really unique about Watertown is we're kind of making history, and we were recognized by DESI as being one of the first districts to go district wide with this initiative. So that's something to be proud of as a town.
Now we would like to show you alignment of Kingian Nonviolence with the Rides Equity Framework and KESO SEO Competencies.
We have told you guys about the six principles of Kingian Nonviolence, but I would like to remind you, have courage, be kind, don't hate, solve, love yourself, stay the course, and trust.
One of the things that we are thinking a lot about is how these six Kingian principles are really aligned with our equity initiatives and our SEL Castle Competencies. So this wheel on the slide shows you how that alignment works, and I just wanted to talk through one of those examples. So one of the equity initiatives that was developed during our work, our district's work with Harvard Rides, is this initiative around diversity that prioritizes having students and staff appreciate and value different perspectives, thoughts, and people, and to form relationships and working relationships across these like socioeconomic and racial, what can feel like chasms sometimes. And that equity initiative relates to the Castle SEL competency of social awareness, where students are building their skills of perspective-taking and empathy, especially for people from diverse backgrounds, which then relates to the Kingian principle of being kind, or the beloved community is the framework for our future, really thinking about bringing together all of the people who are part of our community. And we're also really excited about how this focus on Kingian can help us with one of our specific equity initiatives, which is to really recruit and retain staff who reflect our student body, and showing a commitment to this Kingian work, we think will help us do that as well.
Accomplishments and plans integrated into SEL and equity practices across the district.
So one of the things, next slide, please, thank you, perfect. One of the things that we did for the first time last year is have MLK assemblies at all five of our schools. So that was a really exciting advancement, and actually, some of the fifth grade teachers this year have been talking about now taking some leadership over those assemblies and involving their students as participants and not just audience this year. So it's nice to see how it grows year to year. And we also have been, kind of got a nice flow going of having some really wonderful speakers be able to come to both our middle school and high school assemblies, and then do community forums. So we'll tell you more about this year's assembly speaker a little bit later. But that's one, that's one way that we kind of go pre-K through 12 district wide with this work. That's kind of one of our baseline ways.
Xander.
Yeah, we're going to, we're going to stay on this slide for a while, because this, this slide is really important. This really shows you kind of how we're doing this pre-K through 12, and then even with parent and community involvement as well. So we're going to stay here for a while. We'll let you know when we need to switch.
So every year, the fifth graders will take two Kingian lessons, one in the fall and one in the spring. And today, I went to the Hosmer Elementary School and taught the fifth graders, and it was really cool to enlighten their minds with Kingian. And I just wish that they would teach it there, so it wasn't something like new to them. And it's cool to know that us being able to teach the fifth graders was presented by middle schoolers as well, and like just, it shows how creative those schoolers are.
Yeah, so that's really an initiative that came from a student proposal four years ago and grew, like a lot of this work is.
Savannah.
So I just want to emphasize that throughout this, that there are student initiatives, that what our young Kingian trainer just presented to you was that a fifth grader went to a principal and said, "I really want to teach what I'm learning. I really want to go to the elementary schools." So we're really planting the seed for the grand finale, when you're going to hear about how the movement is going up through the high school, but that these are student-led initiatives. We are bringing Dr. King's dream alive through these students, but these students are taking the seed, and it's being organically and authentically developed through their learning.
One of the ways that we're using Kingian throughout, throughout the Watertown Middle School is through restorative justice circles. So we've been doing both proactive circles through advisory sessions, and reactive circles, which have mainly been used by guidance and sometimes some involved teachers in order to mediate conflicts between students. And these circles have been especially helpful in having conversations around identity, especially when there are instances of racial identity being a difficult conflict between students.
So in middle school, seventh and eighth graders have a chance to take a Kingian elective class. I am in it now, and I love it because we have amazing teachers. And we've only been in school and in this Kingian class for two months, and it feels like we've been in this class for much longer. And it's cool to know that a WMS student four years ago went to Michelle Del Porto and proposed a selective, and he said sure, and now it's like a school-wide class, and all of us are in this class.
This spring, there will be a training taken by six middle school teachers, six high school teachers, three elementary school teachers, and six police officers. This is a really big deal, because it's the first time in four years that teachers are getting the opportunity to catch up to where the students are in this program.
And then another way we're integrating Kingian through the high school is through advisory. Over the summer, I worked with a group of five other students to incorporate Kingian and restorative justice circles into the high school advisory curriculum for the ninth graders.
And I'm a parent of two of the trainers, and I was very honored to be trained by them in one of the community courses. And it's really been amazing to see the opportunities they've had for themselves, but also to bring to others from the initial training four years ago, and now to be a part of creating and writing curriculum for the high school, and kind of watching this move through the years has been quite a joy.
So as a follow-on to some of the work that's already begun and is continuing to go, we're actually planning a retreat in the spring of 2020. We will bring all the Kingian trainers together, and part of the goal that they'll have at that get-together will be to expand upon the ninth grade advisory that they started in the summer, and expand that into the 10th grade. So that would include the advisory teachers, as well as the students that will be potentially participating in the courses that are going to be created by the students.
We've also been using Kingian as a tool to, throughout our community. So we had students lead restorative justice circles at one of the initial anti-bias coalition meetings. So they were leading circles for parents and community members who are interested in talking about how to dismantle bias in our community. And it was a chance for those community members to experience circles and to talk about what brought them to that work. And we will also be using circles at an upcoming anti-bias coalition event on December 11th. So we invite you all to come to that meeting and experience what circles really are at that.
So I just want to reiterate that those students spent their summer developing that curriculum. I just hope that that's not lost on people. And I also want to shout out the administrators, who have been more than receptive to these student-led initiatives. Other ways that we have engaged the community have been at the Kingian breakfast. There's a great tradition in Watertown of students writing essays. We were proud of that tradition, but we also wanted to engage students in other ways by using the arts, poetry, dance, rap, all of the arts. So now that students have multiple opportunities to express their passion for equity and peace and justice. We also have the community course that's coming up, that Savannah talked about at a PTO meeting with me this past week at Watertown Middle School.
So the community courses are happening on February 1st and February 8th, which last week, we, me and Senior Say, and also Tessa Master, which couldn't make it tonight. It's a adult Kingian training, which trainers from our class will be training pretty much everything that we learned. We invited everyone from the Watertown Middle School PTO to go, and we're inviting everyone here February 6th. Oh, February 1st and February 8th. It's held in the police department, the Watertown Police Department, and further details will be forthcoming.
One of the things that we've been dreaming about is, and wanting to put into effect, is having a fully inclusive Kingian community initiative throughout Watertown. And that would include students, parents, community members, teachers, and, and some of the police officers. So as many people as we can, and we're thinking of, we haven't kind of decided on all the initiatives, because this is still in the elementary stages of thinking, is what kinds of activities that would bring people together and have them experience being as a community around the Kingian and circle kinds of philosophies.
Next slide. Don't worry, none of the other slides will take that long. That was the main one. That was the main one.
Okay, so during the summer months, first of all, the Kingian trainers have been relentless and the students in the ninth, the 11th grade have championed, advocated, and led this particular initiative, which is the new ninth grade advisory lessons for, and they've been supported by Anne Marie Woodrow, who's the assistant principal of the high school, and Teddy Di Thessio, who is the ninth grade advisory coordinator, and he has another title too, which is a school adjustment and mental health counselor, plus myself. We worked with the students over the summer months. And Anne Marie basically responded to the request that all the students and the Kingian facilitators were making quite strongly that they wanted Kingian and circle training within the high school. And Anne Marie kindly invited the Kingian trainers, she invited all of them, and six or eight of the students responded to the request to come in and work with Teddy to redesign some of the modules in the advisory curriculum that were responsive to what the students would actually want to be talking about and hearing about and learning about and, and using the Kingian and the circle training frameworks. So I'd love to have the students come up and talk a little bit about their experience this summer.
Can we go back to the other slide, sir?
A group of six students created, over the summer, we created five modules. Three of them were with the restorative justice circles and then two of them incorporated Kingian nonviolence training. These modules included an orientation circle for freshmen entering the high school, social media and authenticity, and current events. The lessons taken from Kingian were about values and conflict reconciliation.
Next slide.
Now we would like to show you benefits and impact, Kingian nonviolence and restorative justice circles.
So this slide comes from a case study that Brandeis University did on our program a couple of years ago. And to, how are we doing on time? Are we okay?
Yep.
Okay. All right, so then we'll keep going. So Gagik is gonna read, quote one for us. Go ahead.
I haven't always been the most confident person. When I think back to it, it helps me, it helps me be more confident and be who I want to be. So this quote really speaks to me because when I was teaching the Hosmer today, really when I was, the first time I did it, I wasn't like as confident. But then when I went back and I talked about it and I really thought about it, I was like, oh, this is not that bad. And I really got to do it.
So clearly my glasses aren't strong enough, so I'm just gonna speak from the heart. It is feeling like I have found my voice doing this. This is my 38th year teaching and being able to present with my colleagues and these students, it was one of the most rewarding days of my career at the Department of Education. And I'm not retiring until this is institutionalized, so I'm throwing down the gauntlet. Because I really do want to retire at some point. But I will come back to teach Kingian once I'm retired. I was a Lucretia Crocker Fellow and she was a woman who marched through the streets for equality. She was the first woman to teach science and math at Framingham State. And she said, "Let those of us who are learners be, let those of us who are teachers be the learners among us." So I am a lifelong learner and I am passionate about this learning.
So, one of the other benefits, and I actually can't read that. I couldn't do it without the Kingian and it taught me how to breathe deeply and to calm down. And one of the things that I looked at was the risk assessment that was done on the students and some of the risk assessments that are done in the, in the community. And one of the top stresses that we all have, we all know and experience fully, is stress. And one of the things that I've discovered as I've been a student of Kingian and circle, circles, is that it's really helped me deeply to calm down and to really take stock and not get so frustrated with things that don't matter. So, just so that you know. All right.
Ruth Holly and I were all part of the socio-emotional learning committee at the Watertown Middle School last year. And as part of our work on that committee, we were looking, we were doing some research about how Kingian has impacted the students in our school in regards to the Castle SEL competencies. So we surveyed a bunch of students and faculty. We found that 100% believe that more WPS students and faculty should be taught Kingian nonviolence. And we kind of asked them questions about some of those SEL competencies. And Kingian nonviolence, 96% of them reported that it had helped them be aware of their own feelings. 95% reported that it helped them understand other people's perspectives, experiences, and stories. And 95% also reported that it helped them understand the difference between being nonviolent and ignoring a problem.
Here are some testimonials. So these are, well, Kingian helped improve climate and culture, student achievement, and increased collaboration. Kingian has given me a sense of belonging and it made me feel that I do have a purpose and that I can make a change in both the lives of others and myself. Student achievement. Before Kingian nonviolence, when I wouldn't achieve my goals, I would get demotified. Oh no, de-motivated. But since taking Kingian nonviolence, I've become better at motivating myself. Increased collaboration. The training has made me more comfortable with working with other people and it has also helped me be able to solve everyday conflicts in school, whether I'm involved or not. And I find that these quotes are very true for me and I think maybe some other Kingian students.
Now we would like to show you the future.
And Dylan, could you pass one of these out to everybody at the big table up there? Give them each one of those?
So I would like to take this opportunity to name drop. My daughter, Talia Kachimwell, former student of Ms. Reed, from her leadership class, runs the social media platforms for the When We Fight, We Win Coalition and has worked closely with Gabby Paceco, who was one of the student, four student activists who marched from Florida to Washington DC to meet with President Obama to start the very precarious, right now, in a very precarious state, the DACA Dreamer Act, where 70,000 students are now at risk. So we are very fortunate that she will be coming to join us for many of our assemblies in the middle and the high school and for an evening event, of which you are all invited to hear this inspiring activist on December 11th. And we are proud to host her, whoops, sorry, January 16th. We are very proud to host her in Watertown.
So you'll see on this calendar, some of the other upcoming events from the Anti-Bias Coalition, and you've heard it a couple times, that we do have an upcoming course in February that you guys are invited to. And we also have on December 11th, as we've mentioned, an intro to these circles if you guys would like to participate and see what they feel like. So I would like to, can somebody give these to the, yeah, you guys got them? Okay, great. So one of the things I really would like to thank Dr. McInnis and Dr. Galston for is doing this work of institutionalization. When, when Dr. Lafayette, who created this, yeah, shake it up, we shake it up in the Kingian room. There you go. When Dr. Lafayette, who co-created this curriculum with David Jensen, had his last conversation with Dr. King just hours before Dr. King's assassination, Dr. King told him that the next step in the work of nonviolence was to internationalize and institutionalize it. And that's really been our work. How do we stop being a side program and kind of find our way into the puzzle that is all of our systemic work in the schools? And Dr. McInnis and Dr. Galston have really been instrumental in that and have been ramping it up a lot this year. It's been beautiful to see. And the example that we gave earlier of new teachers being able to become trained and new officers becoming able to become trained is great proof of that and we look forward to continuing to expand that over the years.
Can I say something?
I also want to thank our principal, Martin and Jason Del Porto, who have released us and covered us and supported our students. And all the administrators involved have just made this just an incredible professional development opportunity for us and for, for our students.
Yep, can we go back for one second?
So here's what we need from you folks, is, here's the pitch, okay. We need consistent funding for these initiatives because we scramble quite a bit to try and put it together and make it happen, but it all thanks to many of the people who have already been named, and Ruth, and Holly, and all the students that are involved. But we need help, basically, and maybe even have it as a line item in the budget. I don't know if that's doable, but we sure are requesting it. And one of the things that we want is, you've already been named in terms of your involvement, we want to have you continue to expand your act of support, endorsement, and definite participation in the school committee, the central office administration, and certainly the school administrators. So we really invite you to come and try it firsthand. We can talk all we want, but to actually experience it, that's the proof of the pudding. And I'd really encourage all of you to attend some of these wonderful programs that we've put a lot of effort into putting together. Thank you so much. Oh, I have a sheet to hand out about some of the benefits that we put together.
And I would just like to say that what we, what was started four years ago, really we can see how it's permeating through Watertown Public Schools from elementary to middle to high school, with our children really taking the lead on initiatives that we all believe are important, equity, social, emotional learning. This is such a major part of it and I really look forward to seeing how this progress continues. Thank you so much.
And our closing quote is, "The function of education is to teach one to think intensively and to think critically. Intelligence plus character, that is the goal of true education." Dr. Martin Luther King Jr.
So I just wanted to, on behalf of the school committee, to thank you, Ruth, and all the rest of the middle school people for all the work that you're doing. It's incredible, and the community folks that are playing a part in this. You know, it's interesting that the, this effort started at the middle school and now it's kind of going both directions. You're reaching down into the elementary schools in a very significant way and now passing it on to the high school. So I think that's great to kind of spread across, across the system, across the district. Appreciate the work very much as the kind of social, emotional domain is so important today, more so perhaps than ever. And the work that you're doing is really critical. So let me open it up, I think, actually, did you want to add something?
I just wanted to say that I think that what we're hearing here, you just identified it as well, but, you know, we've got some systems and structures in place that are making this happen in a more, at scale, whether it be the Equity Leadership Team that we have with our teachers, whether it be the Anti-Bias Coalition that's really bringing together community and schools, whether it be the Rides Initiative, and then building that on the already existing layers of work from the Kingian Nonviolence. It's, it is, it's, we talk about, you know, this is an initiative and, but to hear it in action from the voices of the students and the voices of the parents and the teachers, I think it brings it to life. Like this is what's really happening within our school, so it's pretty powerful.
Great.
I think it's also important to repeat that Watertown is the only community that has elementary, middle, and high school and a police department alliance. The only community.
All right, thanks. Other committee members want to comment or questions? Anybody? Lily?
Just very briefly, first of all, thank you guys so much. This work is beyond important, both for social, emotional learning, but also because there's a direct correlation between bringing in programs like this with restorative justice aspects, who put in reducing punitive punishment for students. And the direct correlation, we know, can greatly impact equity. And so not only is this giving our students and our staff and our community something, this is having a direct impact on the holistic kind of way that we view discipline in this, in this entire district. And I think that that is so powerful and so important and I'm so grateful to every person who is sitting here doing this work because from the students to the staff and to every community member, this can change our district in a really powerful and positive way. So thank you guys.
Thanks. Anyone else, questions or comments? Okay, again, thank you very much for all the work that you've done and the presentation this evening. Appreciate it very much.
I did tell the students they could leave.
Yeah, yeah, you can leave now. That's fine.
Thank you so much.
Well, there goes the talent.
Absolutely. Thank you for coming.
I'm gonna make her. Oh, you should have seen her in high school.
Sorry for the interruption.
All right.
Great, so give me a two-minute report.
Give us a good five, yep.
Okay, we have just a few action items for, on our agenda. The first up is the Buildings and Grounds Subcommittee is gonna make a committee report. Lily?
Yep, so the Building Grounds Subcommittee met last week briefly to go over the capital improvement plan. We had an absolutely phenomenal presentation by Lori Cable, which kind of detailed what's gonna be happening over the next few years, obviously understanding that with all the building projects currently going on, there's going to be a lot of movement and a lot of things that might shift as we move forward. But the focus is obviously going to be both on making sure that we maintain our high school to the best of our capacity while we are still working towards the feasibility and kind of figuring out the MSBA process and going through all of that, making sure that we're continuously doing the work to upkeep the high school as best as possible. At the same time, having a large focus on the middle school, given the fact that this is a building that we are going to be staying with and maintaining, so specifically looking at replacing some boilers, doing a feasibility study for air conditioning, and really just trying to kind of make sure that we continuously do the best to upkeep that space as nicely as possible, kind of refinishing some floors there too. And then of course, as we kind of consistently move forward on all of these building projects, elementary and high school, having some safety nets built into the capital improvement plan that as we go forward, we know that some things may take longer or may need a little bit of an adjustment. But there will be a full report given at the next school committee meeting. So, you know, we just kind of had one meeting and then we're going to have a larger presentation at the next one.
Okay. Yeah, originally, we, we thought we might be voting on the capital plan, but we're gonna postpone that till December 9th, so, so there's no, we don't have to take a vote this evening. Anybody have any questions on the, from the committee meeting? Okay, thank you, Lily. We have approval of gifts. We have several gifts in our, listed here. The Gartangus Brothers Robotics Donation, $500. James Russell Lowell PTO donation for field trips, $750. $400 from the Orbella Insurance Foundation to cover field trips at the Hosmer. $7,000 from the Vinculo Charitable Foundation Trust as a scholarship donation. $200 from the Ben, from Benjamin Moscolo for the Donovan, Allison Donovan Memorial Donation. $480 from the James Russell Lowell PTO for the after-school garden club. And $100 from Olga Pirtel for the Allison Donovan Memorial Donation. Is there a motion to approve?
Show moved.
Questions, discussion, all in favor?
Aye.
Posed? I have it, thank you. Disposition of surplus property, staff desk, and some metal file cabinets, and a drum. Is there a motion to approve the disposition?
Show moved.
All in favor?
Aye.
Posed? I have it, thank you. Minutes, we have the minutes from the school committee meeting from October 21st, our last meeting. Is there any changes, corrections, motion to approve?
Make a motion to approve the minutes of October 21st.
Any discussion, questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Posed? I have it, thank you. And then, we also had a verbal presentation last time on the curriculum subcommittee, and so this is a written version of that that we can then keep in our records. Is there a motion to approve?
Show moved.
Any questions, comments? All in favor?
Aye.
Posed? I have it, thank you. Next would be reports, and we have a report at the beginning here on vocational technical programs at the high school. I'll turn it I'll turn it over to Dr. Galston.
Excellent, thank you very much. I actually have invited Laura Alderson-Rutondo, who's our Career and Technical Education Coordinator, as well as Principal Shirley Lumberg, to help with this presentation in essence on the status update of the future of the career and technical education programs at WHS. I would like to say that this is basically going to be part one, part one of a two-part discussion because coincidentally, or thank goodness, in our MSBA meeting, it became necessary to bring this to your attention this evening and then potentially have the school committee vote on this on December 9th in terms of whether we want to move forward with Chapter 74 programming as part of the MSBA project. So we were just going to provide you with an update, but it has taken a little bit more importance based upon the high school project. So I just, we've had this conversation around career and technical education now for, pretty much since I think I started. You know, we know we are very fortunate that our students attend Minuteman as non-resident tuition-paying students, and that's, we know that they're doing very well and they're being very successful, but we've always wondered what could we be doing here within our own high school on a very smaller scale to provide some opportunities for our students that remain here in Watertown. So last year, if you recall in the spring, we partnered with Digital Ready, who did a feasibility study around what opportunities might be best for Watertown. From that study, it became clear that there were several options, and one of those options would be looking at Chapter 74 programming actually sanctioned from the state to provide opportunities for our students. Other opportunities are creating innovative pathways, which is something that we still remain interested in, and continuing with our career and technical education programs that we already have within our schools. So based upon that feasibility study, which indicated that we should consider a little bit more the Chapter 74 program, programming, we have partnered with consultants to look at what it would really take to bring Chapter 74 programs to Watertown. So tonight is an update around what we think is the best direction, and certainly we would like to get some feedback from the school committee, but I think that we have headed, we're heading down in a direction that I think is very beneficial for our students. So Teresa, thank you. So in terms of our high school, I think a couple of points that are important to make is that we are in a very unique situation right now in terms of where we're located. We're experiencing tremendous economic growth, especially right here in this area, the greater Boston area. We have student interest in looking at some career and technical programs within our school, and the labor market demand is pretty incredible in terms of the opportunities that our students have who either are going to college or not. In the end, what we can do to prepare them in high school, whether they go to college or not, is going to help them in their future in terms of meeting the needs within the labor market demand. We also know that we have, our students right now are not members of a regional school district, so whatever it is that we can do to provide the opportunities for them are really important, and we have a vision around what we'd like to do at our high school, which is to create more of a comprehensive high school model that incorporates state-approved Chapter 74 programs as well as the career and technical education pathways that we already have within our school, which are non-Chapter 74 programs. And then, as I just mentioned, we determined that timing is pretty critical around moving forward with this application process with the impending construction of the new high school. As we go through the feasibility study for the high school, we need to identify through our visioning process if this is a direction that we would like to go in. So timing is perfect, and what we're doing right now is looking at what programs are going to be best, and Laura is going to describe a little bit more about that in a minute, but I want to just go over briefly what it makes a Chapter 74 program. So you have to have state approval to be a Chapter 74 program, and it's based on that larger labor market analysis and availability of programming in other schools and districts. So the state's going to consider, are you offering something that somebody else within, you know, a five or 10-mile radius is not offering, and is it sustainable in terms of the labor market? So when we went through this process, you know, we have these great programs in our high school currently, such as the radio and television production, which, you know, for me in the beginning is why don't we just make that into a Chapter 74 program? But as we find out, as we found out through the process, the state isn't necessarily going to approve a program that doesn't have a large market in terms of jobs after high school, and that's one of those ones that doesn't bear, the market doesn't bear that. So that's one that we did, we decided not to go in, the direction we decided not to go in. So a Chapter 74 program has a minimum number of hours in the program area. It is, it requires a vocational technical licensed educator with experience in the field. Upon completion, for example, engineering students may be able to gain college credit, the Certificate of Occupational Proficiency, which is what happens from a Chapter 74 program, which is noted on their transcript as well. Medical assisting can gain additional certifications in the field. So these are the two areas that we're thinking, engineering and medical assisting. Based upon all of the examination of the labor market and the interest of our students, these are the two areas that we've chosen to move in in terms of applications. So the process is pretty intense, and Laura's been working on that. I would like to say that where we have yet to submit, this is a great opportunity for the school committee to have a discussion around this. It is due by November 22nd, but even if we were to gain approval from the state, that doesn't necessarily mean that we have to move forward, but we are building a new high school, so if we were going to move forward, we would have to consider that as part of our building plan. So at this point, I'm going to hand it over to Laura Alderson-Rutondo to kind of walk through what the Chapter 74 approval process is and why it is that we picked these two programs.
Thank you. If I'm talking too loud, let me know. So Part A is ready. We're ready to submit that. Everything, all the boxes have been checked and everything's ready to go by Friday. We have a decision to make about Part B. We can either continue and prepare Part B to be submitted with the intent of submitting it on March 13th, in which case we would get a decision from the DESE, and we can decide whether or not we want to hold off for a year. We can ask them for a delay of a year, or we can choose not to submit Part B in March and wait another year and submit that later. Either way, it gives us some flexibility about whether we need to start the programming next September or the September after. Whatever year we decide to implement it, we'd get the decision from the DESE on June 30th if we have a teacher already for each of the programs, and these are each separate. Otherwise, we can have up until November 1st to have everything in place, and we could still get a decision to, we could start it in September with the intention of getting that approval on November 1st.
Can I just add one thing? We should know in early December whether the state will even consider approving the two programs that we're applying for. So a lot of this is predicated on approval from the state, but it is entirely possible that the state might not approve our programs. We're optimistic they will, but that's another piece of that as well.
I'm sorry, what date did you just say?
So by December, so we submit on November 22nd, and the, somewhere in the very beginning of December, first couple of weeks of December, the state will let us know whether they've approved Part 1. If they've approved Part 1, then it would be, or Part A, then it would be, we have to decide at that point whether we want to move into Part B. Part B is the practical, the more practical part of the application, like do you have the teacher, do you have the facilities, do you have the space, do you have the time, you know, the curriculum? Those things are all after the pre-approval process in Part A. So we would know in December whether these are even feasible, which is why this is important because this is when we're talking about what our new high school might look like. So it's perfect timing for us.
I have a quick question about timing. If we don't, if we hear on June 30th if we get the program or not, does that give students enough time in terms of setting their schedules and getting the word out that we have these programs? I don't know what the timing is for schedules.
Yep. So I think that that's one of the decisions that we need to make in early December once we get approval, and to think about the timing of when, because I think, as I would say publicly, I think it might be kind of quick to start something in September.
Right.
I feel far more comfortable, you know, getting the Part A approval, which helps us for planning the new high school, but gives us a full year to figure out the curriculum, figure out the space, et cetera, because we know that we can, based upon working with our consultants and knowing our school, we could house the programs within our high school now, but it would only, it would be great if it was only for a year or two before we open up a new school, so I don't think it's going to be in September.
Okay.
But at least we'll know soon, like in a couple of weeks, whether this is even feasible.
That's helpful, thank you.
Yep.
So one of the requirements for the Part A application was that we had to hold a consultation meeting. We had to send letters to any school within five miles that offered a similar program, and there were two schools that offered Engineering Tech. One is Medford and the other is Cambridge. And no schools within five miles offer medical assisting, so we didn't have to consult with anybody except the Mass Hire Board, that they have to be consulted for both. Every person that was invited to the consultation meeting, sorry, every person that was invited to the consultation meeting, the superintendents and the career and tech administrators, all responded verbally and in writing, saying that they supported us doing these programs, but that they could not attend the meeting. So we held the meeting. We have the minutes of the meeting, and we have all the documentation and everything that we needed to have for the presentation, and I guess that's not that unusual. So that part is all set, and they have all signed a letter to the, to their intent that they support us doing these two programs. We, the student and labor market demand analysis was done by the two, it's done by the, I'm drawing a blank on the name of the company, Digital Ready, and also from the blueprint that the state did about what occupations are supported in the area, in the labor market. We also held a Program Advisory Committee meeting, an initial one, because each program has to have a Program Advisory Board. That includes people who work in the industries of the programs, and we were able to get seven engineers to sign on to be on our Program Advisory Committee for the engineering program and four people for the medical assisting, and that's just our initial. We hope to get more. We also got support from Mass Bay Community College, and they have signed on for the, I have the Engineering Tech representative from there, and they've also said that they're going to see if they can get somebody for medical assisting from their program as well. There needs to be a throughput to secondary, to post-secondary education. The hours of instruction, each of the Chapter 74 programs requires a minimum of 900 hours of instruction in the program area in the last three years of their high school careers. So that's something, when we talk about the curriculum, we can, we can take what we have in engineering, but we don't have 900 hours of instruction in engineering, so that needs to be built out as well, and then medical assisting from the ground up. And we would need a certified, vocationally-certified teacher or administrator to put together a curriculum for the medical assisting program. Not sure if either my engineering teacher, Mr. Campbell, or I are eligible to become vocationally-certified. That's something that we're going to be looking into for the engineering program. Let's see. So the Part B application requires a more robust PAC be solidified for each of the programs. We have to hold another Program Advisory Meeting in February if we choose to apply in March. The NIOSH is the National Institute for Occupational Safety and Health, so there are requirements for the facilities that have to be accounted for in this. We have to have the adequate facilities. There's a minimum number of square feet that's required in each of the programs. We would have to put together a outline, a pretty detailed outline of the program of study for the three years for each program. Methods of instruction and industry-required certifications, industry-recognized, sorry, certifications. One of the benefits of these programs is that students actually leave high school with industry-recognized certifications, so that they could either choose to go into the workforce or choose to go to college or some combination of the two. It includes, each Chapter 74 program must include career guidance and some kind of cooperative education, whether that be internships or whether that be summer work or whatever, but that has to be included as well, and we already talked about the licensed teacher. So currently in engineering technology, we already offer Project Lead the Way, which does offer college credit for students who get high enough scores on the end-of-course assessment. We offer that nine through 12 at the high school, and we have five elective options at the middle school that are also in the Project Lead the Way pathway that can kind of lead kids into it. I already spoke before, Medford and Cambridge are the only two within a five-mile radius who offer engineering technology. Watertown is, oh my goodness. The only way I remember to do things is set alarms. Watertown is located in the heart of the medical service industry. Medical assisting is primarily preparing students to work in doctors' offices and clinics and hospital departments, and there is a plethora of those in this area, and there are no schools in close proximity that offer this program. There's a, there's a related program called Health Assisting that really prepares students to be certified nursing assistants. That is not this program. That is offered in other schools in the area, but medical assisting is not. And then the other thought is that at some point we may consider an early childhood program. That is not something we have done any work to prepare a proposal for, for the state. That is something that is kind of on the table. So one of the things that we had to do in order to prepare Part A was to survey students to find out whether there was interest in these programs. So we did a one-question survey to eighth graders and to ninth graders, and I separated out the data. So 44 students answered the eighth-grade survey, and I put numbers up there so I could see them, but they're so small. Oh, here we go. Okay. So for engineering technology, eighth graders of the 44, 17 said that engineering technology was their first choice, eight said it was their second, and 19 were not interested. And for medical assisting, 15 first choice, nine second choice, and 20 not interested. And then for the ninth grade, the numbers were a little bit higher. We got 115 respondents for the ninth-grade survey. For engineering tech, first choice had 28 students, second choice had 32 and 55 not interested, and for medical assisting, 50 students were interested. First choice, 30 second and 35 not interested. So there is more than enough student interest, and for what we're thinking about in terms of these programs is running them as a cohort program with approximately 15 kids in each grade in the cohort for their grade. All right. The workforce planning blueprint for the Greater Boston area that we used as part of the decision for which programs to offer is prepared by the UMass Donahue Institute Economic and Public Policy. We are partnered with the Mass Hire Metro, it's actually Metro North, I'm not sure why that says south and west, we're in the Metro North region, and the Private Industry Council for Boston. There is an overwhelming labor market demand for both of these programs and for students to come out of school with the ability to work in these areas. Let's see. The blueprint identifies healthcare and social assistance and professional and technical services as priority industries and occupations, and critical industries include construction and advanced manufacturing. And there is a possibility that we can build some advanced manufacturing into the engineering technology pathway, so there can be some of that included. It really just says that, the blueprint says that engineering technology is one of the fastest-growing industries in the area, and that we are, we as educators need to be able to prepare students for those jobs or we won't have people for those jobs. Same with medical assisting. In medical assisting, some of the career paths that students could take with that certification would be health technology, medical technicians, nursing, psychiatric and home, psychiatric and home health aides, healthcare support, and there are certifications that we can include in the student's education that they can leave high school with. Certified phlebotomy technician, certified EKG, certified clinical medical... Certified phlebotomy technician, certified EKG, certified clinical medical assistant, billing and coding specialist and medical administrative assistant. Oh, my. So sorry. Or we can just turn it off. All right, so the next steps are that the part application, Part A application is due Friday. It's ready to go, ready to put my finger on the submit button. And then we have to make the decision about whether we're going to choose to do Part B in March or hold off another year. And we need a vote from you on December ninth about whether or not to pursue this with the MSBA project so that we can make sure that the facility is prepared to handle these programs. There's a grant called the Skills Capital Grant that is a robust grant in the state of Massachusetts that we could apply for to pay for most, if not all, of the capital equipment that would be required in both of these programs. We do have some already with engineering, but there'd probably be some more we'd have to do. And then start work on Part B whenever that, we decide that that's the right time.
If I could just add also, it was interesting because as part of the visioning work that we did at the high school, I know a couple of us were there. But it was brought up very specifically about hopes and dreams for the, the school having, bringing back some of the vocational programs, trying to meet the need of, needs of all the students that we have within our schools. And also Laura had said to me anecdotally that when the survey went out, that a student had said, wow, you think we're gonna offer this medical assisting program? This is something that I would really wanna do. So it's, it's not trying to capture back necessarily students from, from other schools. It's really trying to meet the needs of the school, the students that we have in our schools right now, so.
All right, thank you, thank you Laura for the presentation. Let me see if questions from, I have a few questions, but I'll ask the committee first, Mark.
I think this is a great time to be looking at this, the timing is impeccable. And I think, given the information that we see here and we've heard, we should be looking, moving in this direction.
Okay, other, other questions or comments? I have two questions. One is, is if we could get some information about budget implications and staffing implications. Because particularly the, the engineering, we, we have Project Lead the Way. So we're, we're kind of partway down that road. I'm not quite sure whether we're two-thirds or whatever percent down that road we are, but we have something. But on the medical assisting, we, we have some courses there, but we don't, we're not as far as on the Project Lead the Way.
It's a new program.
It's a new program, so, so that clearly I think would have budget implications. So I think we need to have a sense of what we're kind of buying into, what we're, what we're committing ourselves to, I guess.
So for the, if we're gonna choose to not do Part B or to choose to not implement the start of the program until a year from next September, we think that we would need probably a consultant to help us develop the curriculum for the medical assistant program as well as identify the equipment that we need to purchase.
In, in the immediate future, but then further down the road, yes, we would have to hire staff.
Yes.
But before the December meeting, can, you have a kind of a ballpark sense of what that might entail?
Yeah, so in the, for the December meeting, I'll prepare a more detailed memo along with budgetary implications and provide you some information about the choices that our students are making who are not attending Watertown High School. So I think that you'll see that, that there are students who are in these programs in other vocational technical high schools as well.
Okay. Yep.
In terms of the, in relationship to the, the school building project, and I'm not sure who can answer this question, but if, if we implement the program as part of the new school building in the state approves it as part of our grant, is that actually part of what's in the grant versus us buying all this equipment a year before a new school is built? So I'm just kinda curious about the, the timing of like implementing a brand new program that sounds expensive and whether or not that would be part of the grant or not if it was approved.
Yes, and yes. So, I mean, that, that's part of the reason why moving forward to, on December ninth, having the votes and then having that be part of our educational visioning and educational program. Because, you know, within the next four months, we'll be writing our educational program and we'll submit that to the state. And based on that, they will then determine what they're gonna fund to support the educational program. So in, you know, ideally, yes, that will be part of the, the grant program through the MSBA. But this definitely is important, meaning having your, your approval of this as well as justifying why we think that this is something that we would wanna do in Watertown. And yes, as part of the project, there would be, you know, funding for equipment. But that being said, even if we were to start it before we move into a new high school or move into the, whatever we do with the high school, you know, even in the first year, we could potentially need equipment, but not maybe the whole entire.
This is the first year of a roll-off.
Yep, yes, yep. Yes, Kendra.
One was, do you know the numbers of students that leave the district at this point, kind of ballpark, looking for these two programs?
Somewhere around the neighborhood of fourteen and fifteen.
Okay.
Seven and eight.
Okay.
That's what I'll, I'll provide you that information in December.
Great. And then I think this is sort of like Lindsay's comment question. Is there any thought to holding off and waiting until it's in a new school? Or is it better to kind of build up the program as you go, knowing you can move the equipment and everything else? You'll know what the space looks like, et cetera?
So we will work with our consultants to determine that, that answer. That's the one thing we're, right away, once we hear whether we're approved or not, that's the, the most important decision is to determine when we're gonna actually implement. I, I personally always think it's best to get the, the ball rolling. You know, why wait when we have students who could start the program and be well on their way when we move into a new building? Because I think we have the, the students who would want to do that. But what, what would be the best in terms of cost benefit analysis, in terms of, you know, what can we, we already have some pretty excellent Project Lead the Way programming in the, you know, in the building that we have. You know, maybe we start with that and hold off on medical assisting? I don't have an answer to that exactly, but I, I would love to be able to start prior to the opening of a new school.
Okay, one more question.
Yes.
So in theory, if we offered engineering, for example, and there were fifteen kids that were leaving the district for an engineering, they would then stay in Watertown?
Yes.
And is that, is, is there, is that, is there some thinking about would that, that cost of sending them out offset the cost of building up the program? I don't know what the exact numbers are, but I'd just be interested to see what those numbers look like.
It certainly would, would help. You know, I think that we don't go into it with the idea that we're gonna capture back people, but I, I do think that there's the, you know, it is a realistic discussion around, you know, potentially the students who aren't in our schools could be in our schools. And that would be a benefit financially for us as well.
Right, no, I, I know it's all theoretical, but isn't a stu, isn't a student required to, if you have a chapter seventy-four program and you offer it and that's what they want, then that's where they go? They can't opt at?
No, right, yes, yep.
Understood, thank you.
Other question, Eileen?
So I think this is a really exciting idea. I'm very much looking forward to seeing what happens. One of the things that occurs to me is that I think it takes time, for example, to develop the relationships with outside industries for internships and so on. So I don't see a reason to delay starting to develop those kind of relationships. And the other thing is that because we're a small school, we always have trouble scheduling students for different singletons. And so that, in addition to students who might not leave the school district, you may be facing students drawn from other classes that are already small, who would now follow one of these pathways. And therefore you might have to do some rethinking about some of the other classes that we've have had up to now. So I think it's a complicated budgetary and scheduling issue. And it, I don't see a danger in getting more information about how that would look in our high school.
Yeah, ideally, you know, we, we were talking a little bit about this earlier. I mean, you would get your cohort of students who would be part of the program, you know, whether it's five, ten, fifteen, whatever that might be. And yes, they're going to be, you know, melded as a cohort and take those courses together. And they would not be taking others. But it's not a dramatic number of students, so I'm not necessarily thinking that it's gonna reduce, you know, programs, et cetera, outside of this. However, we would certainly want students outside of the chapter seventy-four programming being able to take the courses. So, you know, scheduling wise, that's gonna be, you know, probably even more of a challenge is how to, the cohort model works pretty easily, but it's the, how do you get kids who might just wanna take an engineering class or who just might wanna take the entrepreneurship class or the, whatever it might be that's tied to these? Because we wanna make sure everybody has opportunities to, to benefit from this. So yes, it'll be a challenge, but I think that it's something well worth in, embarking on.
Anything else, other questions? I just have one, one of the very first slides. And this is just some clarity on, on kind of how I understand the terminology here. The, one of the bullets says, "The vision is to, to create comprehensive, to create a comprehensive high school model." And so I, I take that, what do you mean by comprehensive?
So it's not just in.
I take that to mean something bigger than what I thought we were talking about.
So a comprehensive high school isn't just an academic high school. It's one that offers opportunities above and beyond your traditional academic programming. It doesn't mean that you're a vocational technical high school in any way, shape or form. It just means that you're, you're understanding that comprehensive will meet the needs of more than just your students who are on an academic path. So it's, I mean, we, we basically function as a comprehensive high school now. We just don't have chapter seventy-four programming. Meaning it's comprehensive in the sense of, you know, we have all of the career and technical education programs. But it's just not as intense as a chapter seventy-four program is. And it isn't necessarily preparing students to walk out the door and be able to enter into, you know, a profession, so.
I mean, I guess I think of a comprehensive high school as one that has, I don't, you know, seven, eight, nine, chapter seventy-four programs, but you think the term is broader than that.
I think it is, absolutely. Especially nowadays, I think, you know, you get away from the idea of comprehensive high school forty years ago, thirty years ago was, you know, heavy trades as well as your academics. So, you know, plumbing, electrical, et cetera. I think as we move, and this is, this is a, something that's happening across the state, is technical education, you know, looking at the labor markets, looking at where we're going. It is far more of the, the technical programs such as engineering or medical assisting or, you know, hospitality. I mean, there's, there's business, there's all these other, you know. Right, web, web development, computer science, you know. We picked the two that we think we can sustain. But I think that when we think about comprehensive high schools, it's really preparing students for multiple opportunities after graduation. And it's not that traditional sense of, you know, trades or a heavy vocational program.
Okay, all right, thank you. So on December ninth, you'll be looking for a vote from us to, you're gonna, you're gonna submit Part A.
Yep.
But then on December ninth, a vote for, from us to kind of move forward to the next step or to basically incorporate it into the thinking about the, the new high school.
Exactly, yep. The MSBA is very prescriptive, they have a language around that as well.
Okay, and then Part B will come in March.
If, or maybe the following March, depending upon when we launch.
Okay, okay. I, I just asked as a question to the school committee, do people feel a need to have this go to a subcommittee for discussion and then back to us before December ninth? Or are you comfortable with just coming to us on December ninth? Just as a question.
Fine with it coming, yeah.
Fine with it? Okay, all right, just, just ask. Okay, thank you very much, thanks for the report. Building for the future, elementary schools, Mark?
Thank you. The, we're, we're moving towards sixty percent design. Where now Wednesday evening, we will be doing a little deeper discussion about budget. We're looking at exterior finishes again. The designs are pretty much where we want them to be. We have some sustainability issues that are still outstanding. But we continue to move forward with projected, you know, moving this, moving, getting these projects started by sometime mid-year next year.
Okay, thank you, any questions? So you mentioned that the meeting this week?
Yeah, the, the meeting is on Wednesday. It's further down on the list, but it's on Wednesday evening at six PM, but it's at the lecture hall this time.
At the high school.
At the high school.
In those, a public forum on Tuesday.
Right.
Yes, well, that's under the high school.
That's the high school.
Oh, sorry, wrong update.
One step at a time.
I'm just trying to move this along.
Right, and, and so I will say also, I'll just add to that, I'm involved with the Sustainability Subcommittee, which will be meeting before at, at four forty-five, also in the lecture hall, on the sustainability issues. High school.
Excellent, so we began our visioning process for the new high school on November the fourteenth. I believe we had well over fifty people that were part of that process. We had students, which is probably the most important voice to have in the room, parents, teachers, administrators, community members, some elected officials. Certainly it was a broad spectrum of people that are invested in seeing, foreseeing what's gonna happen at our high school. So the work really focused around thinking about, you know, what our hopes and dreams are for our new high school. We spent some time thinking about what a new high school might be able to offer us in terms of programming, et cetera. We heard from our coordinators about existing programs that we'd like to continue moving forward, but also their hopes and dreams for their particular disciplines or programs. And then we finished the afternoon with a strengths, challenges, opportunities and growth goals exercise in which we really identified what are we most proud of, what are we, what are we most challenged by? And imagine it was mostly the building that was the biggest challenge. And then the opportunities that a new building will bring us, so that's just step one. We meet again on December second and then again on December sixteenth. And in those meetings, we'll take all those ideas that we started with and start looking at, you know, videos and pictures and images of what a new high school might look like to get us to think about what do we wanna see within our new high school. So it's a great process and I thank everybody that's part of that. Many of the people on the committee have been there, future school community members as well. But I, I think this is probably the most important work to make sure that we are putting into our educational program exactly what we want for our high school. Because that's what's going to influence what the MSBA is going to partner with us in terms of the grants. So it's very exciting. And that being said, we also have a community forum on Tuesday evening, the twenty-sixth, which will be taking place in the lecture hall at six thirty and at the high school. And the purpose of that is for anyone in the community, is everyone's invited to find out more about the process of the high school building project as well as there'll be a time for interactive dialogue around what the community might be thinking about as well. So that's a very exciting evening to, I think, one of many forums that we'll have. But certainly it's an opportunity to hear more about the project, the high school project first, firsthand, so.
But that's, that's tomorrow night?
That's, no, that's on Tuesday, the twenty.
Tomorrow, tomorrow, six thirty.
Oh my gosh.
You're a week, you're a week ahead of yourself, check that calendar.
I will be there, I will be there as I think I'm presenting, so.
So it's, that's tomorrow at, at six thirty?
Six thirty.
Yes, that is tomorrow evening at six thirty.
Right.
If you wanna come back, I'd be more than happy to entertain people on the twenty-sixth as well. But I would recommend tomorrow evening that everybody comes at six thirty to the lecture hall.
Thank you, thank you, any questions on the high school? All right, thank you very much. Budget, Ms. Perkins?
Thank you. The attached report is for all activity posted or encumbered through November fourteenth. As mentioned, about ten percent of the salary lines have been encumbered at this time. We've had some turnover to struggle through for the last couple of months on filling our payroll position. Our longtime payroll person left, as many of you know, right before school started. So we're, we're covering, but it's a little bit thin. The district salary administration salary line incorporates all the funding for the salary increases for twenty-one, as we've mentioned several times. We should be able to start allocating some of that very shortly. As we settle our contracts or begin to settle our contracts, we'll allocate into the appropriate salary lines as those contracts are settled. The expense lines are encumbered at percentages that we would expect at this point in the year. As mentioned prior, or for anybody who wasn't here to hear before, the items that are running over budget are the Minuteman tuition line, which has had more students than we budgeted for, decide to attend and one unbudgeted student tuition for Norfolk Aggie. We, it's too early in the, in the year to really see any significant savings. We anticipate that we'll have some here and there, pockets of savings we'll identify a little bit later, a couple of months. We are receiving some requests for some technology items that were not in the budget and are being identified as we've had new staff come on board this year and they're taking stock of the educational needs. Primarily those are for some interactive projectors in classrooms that don't have them and some STEM items for the elementary. We anticipate approving some of the less expensive requests over the next month, which would probably be the elementary, some of the elementary. elementary, some of the elementary items, um, and some of the projectors, and then continue as we go on in the budget process, um, through this year to see where we, um, might have room to continue, um, purchasing some of the items that have been brought to our attention. Um, the one thing that I did want to point out, and I, and I put in the report, is on the attached chart under the non-salary section for student services in the budget amendment, there's two million, one thirty-one, five forty. That is the budgeted offset. You'll see, um, the corresponding entry down in the offset. That is for the circuit breaker of two million, six thousand, five forty, and one hundred and twenty-five thousand foundation reserve aid. So, every year, um, we budget for the full amount of the expenses, and then we amend the budget for the amount of the offset, and it's just an off-, offsetting amount to show the public that if we didn't have that state aid, what it would cost in, um, you know, local taxation to support those programs. So, we do get over two million dollars in aid that was applied. We have one year to spend that, and these were receipts from last year, so they do have to be used in this year. Um, the correspondingly, in the actual line, there's a negative one million, eighty-three thousand in the expenses, and I just wanted to explain what that is. We also have to move expenses over to these state aid revolving funds, and we did that upfront for that two million, one thirty-one. So, as actual expenses move from the encumbered line over to the expended, eventually that negative goes down to zero and will become a positive number. It's just that you want to do that at the same time that you're booking the offset, or it will throw things off two million dollars here or there and, and not reflect. So, um, just wanted to explain that. Um, fun little accounting stuff there. Um, we don't know of any pressure points particularly right now, other than the few mentioned, um, or any significant savings, but, um, we'll have more information once the FY twenty salary amounts are determined and we allocate into the salary lines what the expenses will be.
Okay, thank you. Any questions on the budget presentation? Okay. Uh, we have a budget and finance meeting, Kendra, you want to speak to that coming up?
We have a budget and finance meeting on the twenty-sixth of November at five P.M. and we'll be doing two things. One is reviewing the budget calendar for the year, as well as the FY twenty-one budget priorities.
And so both of those will come back to the school committee in December for an action-
Yes.
-as an action item?
And it will be in the data lab at thirty Common Street.
All right, thank you. Um, personnel? We have a personnel report.
Nope, I think we're-
So, we have, in our materials here, we have a personnel report, um, you know, changes in, in, uh, teachers and substitutes, et cetera. Any questions? Okay. Um, enrollments?
So, yeah, our enrollment is, um, remaining, uh, relatively stable in the sense of, um, we don't see any spikes except for we have an increase in our high school. Um, more and more people are moving into the high school, which is, um, interesting to see that that number continues to go up. Um, but overall, I mean, that's not something that we can't absorb, and that's not something that we should be concerned with, but certainly there are some increases at the, um, high school level. Um, but other than that, I think that we are in a good place in terms of enrollment.
Okay, any questions? Uh, and then the warrants, we have a list of the warrants in your packet, mostly, you know, payroll and other items. And then, um, school committee chair, I, I don't have any, uh, particular, uh, items. Uh, I will mention, though, it's not listed on our list or, or down below in terms of upcoming events, but Friday is the trivia night-
Yes.
-that's sponsored by-
Good Life School Committee.
Pardon?
Good Life School Committee.
Sponsored by the Community Foundation. Um, and the school committee will, will have a, a, a team there. I need to get confirmation from everybody to make sure everybody can attend. Let me know if you can't, because you'll have to get substitutes, uh, just so long as we, uh, we will beat the central office. I will make that prediction.
Like I said, good luck.
So, uh-
So, you, now you have your opportunity to give-
Yeah, thank you, yes. Um, I'd just like to share with everyone that trivia night is on a Friday night, and, uh, the district leadership team is strong, um, and stands the age groups, and it's going to be fantastic. Um, uh, just a couple of notes, the super- I'm, I, there's no need for me to say more than what we saw today in terms of that fantastic presentation by our students and our teachers, but, um, I have my superintendent's coffee. It is on Monday, the twenty-fifth. I have verified that. Um, I meet at nine o'clock and again at seven P.M. in the Phillips Administration Building on the third floor. Everyone is welcome. You know, I, I would encourage people who have questions about the building projects, et cetera, to come to the, um, coffee to get answers. Um, one thing I wanted to share with the, the community is that, um, we are reinstituting the Food for Thought Program, which is a partnership with the Watertown Community Foundation and the Rotary Club, um, and the public schools, where we are supplying, um, food for, uh, students who may be food insecure, um, over the weekend. So, we are piloting it at the kind of, but we're going to be ex- expanding that hopefully across all of our schools. Um, but we are very pleased to have that back in place, um, in the schools.
Thank you, Dr. Olson. Um, any new business? Nope. Um, announcements, uh, we've already made most of these community forums. Tomorrow night at six thirty-
Yes.
Uh, school building committee on Wednesday. Anti-bias Coalition also meets on Wednesday?
It does.
Right?
Yes, Dr. McGinnis will be leading that.
Okay. And there's a CPAC meeting on the twenty-first, uh, superintendent's coffee you just mentioned, budget and finance we just mentioned. The next school committee meeting is December ninth, two thousand and nineteen. Actually, uh, I apologize, we, we actually will have a, a school committee meeting next Monday that hasn't been posted yet. I should have mentioned that. Uh, we will have, uh, at five thirty in this, uh, in the chamber here. Probably have an executive session at the beginning and then a public session. Uh, but that will be, uh, I don't anticipate the whole, whole thing lasting more than, say, forty-five minutes, but that will be next Monday at five thirty for a school committee. Um, public forum? I missed new business. Did I say new business?
You said new business.
I did new business, okay.
You're fine.
Was there any business? No, there's no business. Motion to adjourn?
Show move.
All in favor?
All right.
Opposed, guys have it. Thank you.